Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We always begin our city council meeting with a prayer and pledge. So if you would like to join me. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to meet tonight, that we get together and deliberate the business of our city. We ask you to be with us during that deliberation, also be with all our city workers and all our residents. We ask you to keep them safe in your name, we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Milne.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench is pre-excused. Mayor Protem Clark is pre-excused. Councilmember Moore.
Right.
Councilmember Bryan is pre-excused. Councilmember Balls.
Right.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have six members present, three excused.
Thank you. And to the audience, this is a good time to check your cell phones for me, please, to make sure that they are silent and do not interfere with our meeting. That also goes with my councilmembers sitting to my left and right also. Many times we catch ourselves in that kind of situation. Also a reminder to kind of remain quiet and refrain from speaking too loudly back there with the audience during the council meeting so that the council has an opportunity to hear everything that is being presented. And with that, Madam Clerk.
I have no announcements this evening, so our next order of business is personal appearances.
And if you've signed up for personal appearances, you needed to do that today by 1:00. As we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching tonight on SGTB, and to the council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. And with that, Madam Clerk.
Our first personal appearance is Diane Clock.
Good evening. My name is Diane Clock. I live at 2112 Grashett Avenue, Saginawsome, Michigan. And I am here to speak in support of the Wicks Park Project. Two weeks ago, I attended the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast, and as I looked around the room at the gathering of people from all different neighborhoods, faiths, socio-economic statuses, and races, I thought to myself that we need something like this to bring us together more often. Fast forward to Sunday afternoon. I attended the gathering for the presentation of the report from the Community Planning Assistance Team, and when they opened with a slide titled "One River's Front, One Saginaw", I was hooked. The recommendations from the team are in line with the City of Saginaw Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, and best of all, is a project that we, from all neighborhoods, faiths, and any socio-economic status, can work on together. We would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Melkonian.
My name is Debbie Melkonian, 2116 Adams Boulevard, and I too am here to speak on the Wicks Park Project. But before I do, I'd like to give you a brief history of GOHI, Get Outside for a Healthy Insight. This is the group that has sponsored, or actually developed, the idea and concept of revitalizing Wicks Park. Back in November of 2015, GOHI received a $25,000 check from Saginaw Valley, the Battle of, I'm sorry, the Battle of the Valleys. At that time, if you recall, I brought in a huge copy of that cardboard check and showed it to the council and everyone that was present. That was the start of our program. Since then, we've sponsored Walk with the Doc, which was a walking program that took place at Hoyt Park on Saturdays, and several other activities. We meet monthly at Fuzzy's, and our group is growing. Sharon Dinsy is responsible for writing a proposal to the planning team. It was accepted, and you'll hear more about that. We were together all week long with seven individuals from that team and many, many residents, from all walks of life, from several businesses throughout the city of Saginaw, city employees, our city manager, and some councilmembers. I am in support of this program, and I urge you to listen carefully to the recommendations, the suggestions, the doable ways that this project can go on, and the funding mechanisms that are available. We realize that the city does not have money to support a project like this, but there are a variety of funding avenues that could support this. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Jane Fitzpatrick.
For the record, I'm Jane Fitzpatrick, 123 Heine Avenue in the city of Saginaw, and I am also here to speak in support of the Wicks Park Revitalization Project. Wicks Park is a gem of the city that has been abandoned for many years. It's adjacent to or across the river from federal and state wildlife preserves and passive parklands located near the merging of a number of rivers in our greater Saginaw Bay watershed, and it makes it, this makes it a perfect piece of a much larger tapestry. That being said, it is also an abandoned outdoor recreational community park in the south side of Saginaw. There is a relationship of outdoor recreational activity to healthy citizens. I quote Winston Churchill, "Healthy citizens are the greatest asset that any country can have." Also, I would like to express my variation of a favorite quote from Mahatma Gandhi as it relates here to this discussion. "The greatness of a city can be judged by the way its citizens are treated." To attract business and to attract talent through our economic development initiatives, I believe that how we take care of our city's citizens is a reflection of how we value ourselves and how desirable our city is as a place to invest in and to become a resident of. I have a bumper sticker at home that my son brought to me that says, "Detroit Never Left." Well, Saginaw never left. But over the decades, we as a city have pulled back from certain neighborhoods. It's time to show the world that we take care of ourselves, all of ourselves. The Wicks Park Revitalization Plan that you will be seeing shortly can be another important step in demonstrating this. I also would like to respectfully request, it's my understanding that the consultants are given 10 minutes to make their presentation, I respectfully request that you consider giving more time to this based on all of the input and all of the great information and items in this plan. Thank you.
Our next order of business is remarks of council.
And remind councilmembers, you have a five-minute limit, and tonight we begin with Councilman Tibbs.
Thank everyone for being here today. Let's keep my comments short. There was just something I just wanted to share was that, I guess there was a foreclosure or an eviction at a property located on the corner of Court Street and Lockwood, and, you know, it was heartbreaking. Myself and another neighbor, we were attempting to clean up the area because there was just papers scattered everywhere, broken glass, and, you know, it was heartbreaking seeing that someone, you know, lost their home and losing their personal effects, but, you know, I understand business is business, but it was still yet a learning experience for me. But it was also a dangerous situation. When we were cleaning that area, there were several knives in the area. Some of the knives were six inches, seven inches long. I mean, I have pictures to show you. They were field prescription bottles, which considering our, the opiate crisis that we're dealing with, and many people enter homes and vacant homes and look for prescription bottles so they can feed their addiction. There's broken glass everywhere as far as cars driving by, kids playing, and the situation, I thought, even put some of our community assets in jeopardy. There's a few library carts, and, you know, the library is something my kids and I attend often, and I believe you can check out as many as 30 books from the library at one time. And so it jeopardizes the library to do what they do. I just, I guess I just didn't see how leaving that property in that condition is good for anyone. It's not good for the new property owners. I don't, I can't see that being a good business decision. It's definitely not good for the previous property owner, and I don't think, it's definitely not good for the city and neighborhood. And I asked around and see if there've been similar situations, and I heard one instance where someone was evicted or asked to leave and their property was torched. And so, I don't know, I just think something like that has to be looked at. I guess what I've been thinking about on a surface level is that, you know, I know some of this is a state-level issue as far as how court orders are being issued, but maybe there's some things we can do on a city level. And I don't want to be anti-business and just make things hard for individuals, but I think people should do things right, and that's just wasn't right. And I know Detroit has, and when I first read it a couple of years ago where Detroit required those who were being evicted to put these items into cubicles or whatever, I just thought that may have been, you know, extreme, but in that situation, you know, I mean, if there's something like this is the regular and not the exception, I mean, I think the city should try to consider something like that or do something different. I mean, it's just, it's just, you shouldn't, your neighborhood shouldn't have to look like that, and especially in any neighborhood, but that thoroughfare where we have commuters from other areas coming through the city to try to get to their places of employment, we got MLs across the street, several kids, our number of kids in the area, we have elderly individuals, it's just, I just think that's something we should look at, and I'm just, you know, if you have any suggestions, I'll be making myself available, but I just think, again, that's something we should look at and try to see what we can do to protect our neighborhoods a little better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I observed a number of different events and goings-on in the last two weeks. While I was downtown a couple of weeks ago, I ran into some urban explorers in town from Muskegon, and they were here specifically to look at some of the older homes and the architecture in Saginaw. They were very interested in it, and they were making a day of it, so I suggested they look for a good restaurant right here in the city instead of going out of town, but they were in the downtown area looking at things like the Hill House, and I believe they stopped at the Lee Mansion, and I recommended they take a look at the facade at the Brewer Arcade, which we had just put into the hands of a developer. So there is apparently a website out there pretty dedicated to this type of thing, and they had a group of about half a dozen people came to Saginaw just to look at it. So I encourage that. Next thing was the opening of a new business in Old Town, the Liquid Lounge, and that's PJ Barrera is the owner and manager, related to Paul Barrera over at Jake's. And I highly recommend people stop and try, and I'm looking forward to trying their poutine, which is a menu item Saginaw has been in need of for quite a while. I attended two events representing the city. Friday, I was at the Wicks Park Focus Groups at the Montague House in the Economic Development Group Focus Group, and we had quite a lively discussion there, and we're going to hear more about that in a little bit. And on Saturday, I represented the mayor and the city at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for brand-new Eagle Scout Jonathan Rojas, and that was a very moving event and something that I'd look forward to attending another one. And I was able to read and present the proclamation from the mayor to this new Eagle Scout. So that's most of my comments.
Good evening, everyone. I really want to just highlight one thing that I knew about but see is now in the official Saginaw Police Department newsletter. I want to congratulate the chief and the Saginaw Police Department for its commitment to the Hope Not Handcuffs Program. It is a program, an initiative started by Families Against Narcotics. It is the program where if you are struggling with addiction issues, you can go to a participating police agency, and I'd say turn yourself in, but that sounds like you're going to be treated as a criminal. You won't be. Hugs Not Hand, Hope Not Handcuffs, the concept is to find treatment for you. So if you're out there and you're struggling with addiction issues, this is another example of how our police department is reaching out to the community to address a need and to do so in a helpful way. So my commendations to the department. I know that it is an initiative that is being looked at by other police departments throughout the county, throughout the Great Lakes Bay region. There is an opioid crisis, there is an addiction problem in this nation, and this is just one very positive way of addressing it. So again, congratulations and thank you. That's what I have.
I'd like to thank the people that came for the personal appearances to talk about Wicks Park. I agree 100% that parks make our city look better. When our city looks better, I think our citizens act a little better, considering the fact that I think Wicks Park is a jewel in our city. It connects to the other parks, we can have a trail going through there, and it'd be really nice. I had the opportunity to spend some time in Milwaukee, and they have a gigantic park that go out on the side of the highway, and they have big concerts there and stuff like that for a whole weekend, and I can see Saginaw doing the same thing. And eventually, maybe we can go over to the west side of the city and grab that park too. I think it'd be beautiful for our city to have those things in our city. So I want to thank you guys for your efforts. Thank you very much. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to spend some time with the NAACP at the Messiah's Baptist Church. They was there to talk about lifting the tax cap. The NAACP is really, really, really want to get involved in educating the citizens of the city of Saginaw with the pros and cons about lifting the tax cap. The finance director and the budget director, Lloyd Brown, and Yolanda Jones was there at that meeting, showing them a few things and answering a few questions. And it was a real uplifting meeting. I think the citizens are ready for this to happen in the city of Saginaw. We can't live on 1989, or $79. It's impossible. And if we don't do something, if we don't have any money, that's why we don't have a good parks. We used to have a parks division in the city of Saginaw. That's one reason why we don't have a parks division in the city of Saginaw. We had a parks division in Saginaw, the kids have someplace to go and play, you know, so I think that we really need to lift this tax cap. I appreciate the NAACP for getting involved. I think they're going to have community forums at churches and going out talking to people about lifting it, so I'm really happy about that. The fire department needs youth aged 14 to 20 to get involved in their explorers program. I've talked to the fire chief numerous times about that program. He said he don't have enough kids. So if anybody here to hear my voice, the citizens, please get involved in that program. You can call the central fire department or get in contact with Chief Van Lu to get kids involved in that. Whenever kids can get involved in things early, they have a tendency to really shine in that area. I know for a fact I have a son that's a master plumber and pipe fitter because his father got involved in it. I don't like telling everybody he has a master's license, and I don't have one, but let you know that the kids can move on and do greater things if they got it in the right spot, so let's get our kids involved in that explorer program. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank our public speakers who spoke tonight. As always, ladies, let a woman lead the charge. So proud of you. The last couple of weeks have been relatively busy. On last weekend, I was to attend the MML workshop, and I ended up facilitating the workshop. Go figure that. I went to be a student, not the teacher, but it ended up I was the teacher, so I'm excited about that. In March, I will receive my third level, which means I have one more level to go, which means Saginaw, look out, we getting ready to get on the map. If we can find some money, I'm going to find it for us, or with their help, we will find some money. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to VDM, Victoria's Believers Prayer Breakfast, and it was just phenomenal. So I'd just like to do a shout-out to VDM, a job well done, the speaker was dynamic, and what she talked about was taking time to take care of home. And the ladies and the gentlemen who are working with the Wicks Park area, maybe you weren't there, but you should have been, because just what you're doing is what she says we need to do. We need to invest in our own area. How can you expect for somebody else to do it when we don't do it ourselves? So my hat goes off to VDM and also to the young people and the older people, which is always young to me, who are trying to get the Wicks Park area together. It's always been a jewel to me. I was angry when they shut the road down. So maybe we can get together and we can try to get that road open back up, and we can do that. M-13, drive all the way through, go all the way to O'Jipway. We'll never know if we don't try. So I truly would like to thank everyone who has been participated in this. I called Debbie, and I thought I had some meetings still yet to go to, so I do apologize for not attending. You know, that's not the norm. That's not the norm for me, so I do apologize, but I do so very much want to be a part of the new wave, Wicks Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of items. I'd also like to thank our speakers tonight and look forward to the presentation that's coming up a little later in our council meeting. Just a couple of quick announcements. March is the national, March is National Red Cross Month in our country, and as a Red Cross instructor, I encourage people to get out, donate blood if you can. If not, make sure that you are updated on CPR, AED, First Aid. Those are very valuable to our community, and we hear about those success stories constantly. And so we encourage you to try to, if you have never taken all of those classes, please do. The life you save may be one of your loved ones, and that's very critical for us. I'd like to again continue to thank those that are working so hard on the efforts to possibly remove the tax cap. It's, I'm asked periodically, when is that going to be removed? And the answer is, when the citizens want it removed, when they want it removed, that's when it'll be removed, and so hopefully, I really are feeling very positive about this effort coming up. YMCA is offering veteran support program on March 13th, and that is going to be a health seminar, and contact the local YMCA for the exact time of that, but that's coming up on March 13th. Also, some news, much anticipated news, I've been waiting for years on this one here. Delta College has announced a groundbreaking, the actual breaking of the ground is now happening. We're so excited about that. March 26th at 3:00 PM downtown, that has come through, and we're looking forward to the presence of Delta College right downtown in Saginaw, so looking forward to that. With that, Madam Clerk, that ends our council remark.
Your next order of business is reports from manager.
Thank you. A few items, and then we have the presentation, and I know we had someone comment about the time, but I just wanted to respond to that with, that's kind of the time limit that I put on all of the presenters that come to council just to make sure that they have equal amount of time to most other agencies, and also give councilmembers time to ask questions and comment about the project. So I anticipate it will be longer than that once you guys start asking questions and making comments about the presentation. Downtown Saginaw Rotary Club did donate $5,000. That's an item on your agenda as well, and I believe it's the second or third year in a row they've donated that money to the police department for equipment, so I wanted to recognize that and thank them. Again, they've been pretty committed to doing that every year. As the mayor mentioned, the Delta College groundbreaking is scheduled. I signed the title documents last week, so the property should be transferred, and we did receive the items back from the title agency, and the address for the building's going to be 319 East Genesee. It's a three-story, 35,000-square-foot building, and to be occupied in June of 2019, with classes beginning in the fall of 2019. Also, I'll mention that the construction project manager is Spence Brothers, and the architect, architects are WTA, both city of Saginaw businesses, so like to, glad that Delta selected those two businesses to manage and develop the project. Phil Carwa and I, and Brian Luckel from the Saginaw County Parks Department, met with the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy last week as well regarding the Janet Nash Park. So the three groups were going to work together on the maintenance of that park. The land conservancy is committed to continuing to raise funds and also doing upkeep on that. The county and the city will work, will be on the hook for mowing around there, but I don't think that'll be too difficult, and also ultimately, it is a contract that the city has with the school, so we would be responsible for any hardscaping repairs. So we'll keep an eye on that, and we'll continue to work with those groups. We will probably be bringing an agreement, a three-party agreement back to council for that maintenance. And finally, I would mention that our next meeting is Student Government Day. That's March 19th, so our meeting will be at noon that day, and we'll also, as usual, meet with the students at 11:00 AM at the American Legion Post 22. If councilmembers are available, we'll be glad to have you there, and sit down and have lunch with the students and talk to them about your roles on council. I know the mayor will be with them all morning, so if anyone else wants to participate in that part throughout the day, just let Vicki Davis know, and she'll set it up for you as well. And with that, I will ask the CPAT team to come up and give their presentation on their Wicks Park Project. This is, I think, very similar to the charrette that we had some years ago. So with that, I'll hand it over to the team.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just want to thank you for your time and your willingness to hear about the Wicks Park planning effort that's taken place over the past few days. My name is Leslie Dornfeld. I'm the leader of the Community Planning Assistance Team, which is sponsored by the APA. We're a team of volunteers that is here with a grant from the Community Foundation of Saginaw that covers our travel and expenses. Most of the other team needed to return and go back to work, so I am here to present for you tonight. But just to take one moment to give you an idea of who is on our team, we had two landscape architects, we had an expert in public health, an expert in funding, and an expert in community... and an expert in community empowerment or community capacity. And I'd be more than happy to tell you about each of them, but I know your time is short. So we just want to get into the presentation. Our process was fairly intense. We've pretty much been here for five days. Every day, we had a community meeting. We got two broadcasts on the news, which we were very flattered to have and really glad because it showed the amount of interest in this park. We started a Facebook page when we came. We've already got 41, 42 followers. But most importantly, over the five days, we probably had over, and if you include tonight, well over 100 participants coming in and out and giving us their ideas about the park. Our process, as you can see, was fairly straightforward. We started before we got here with a fair amount of research. And our team met a few times when we got here. Our first day was a visioning meeting. Our second day, we began to create and generate alternatives. We refined the ideas and the things that could happen in the park on day three and day four. We made recommendations to the community and listened to their feedback. And today, we're here presenting. You know, you might say, why Saginaw? Why now? Why Saginaw? Great place? And our whole team really recognizes that this park is part of something bigger. Saginaw's really got a lot going for it. The old town is phenomenal, the Riverfront Trail. You're working on Celebration Park. We heard the YMCA got a grant to expand the Iron Bell Trail Grant, which was sort of the catalyst for a lot of the interest in Wicks. You have Art in About, which is this great program that brings art and puts it around your community. And then also, there is a grant to finally begin to move the Malibu site forward and create the viewpoint on that big mound. So there's a lot going on here. And it's a great opportunity to kind of join in this momentum. So then we ask, why Wicks? Well, many of the speakers here have really talked about it already. It's a key link. When you step back and look at the regional picture, it's a key link between the city and the Shahuwasi National Wildlife Refuge. Across the river, you have the Green Point Nature Preserve. You've got three rivers that come together at the south end, which create what we're told is probably some of the best wildlife fishing anywhere to be found. You've got, excuse me, you've got the Iron Bell Trail, which is a statewide trail coming through Wicks and connecting down M-13. But also, if you stand at the south end of Wicks Park, I can't throw, but one of our landscape architects who has a better arm said he thinks he can throw a ball or throw a rock and hit the Shahuwasi. It's that close. So there's tremendous opportunities for wetlands, for preserves, for river views, for river access, and also for community access. Wicks is one of the very unique places in Saginaw where a neighborhood really backs right up to a beautiful green space that backs up to a river. And so the opportunity to connect all of the city through this park, directly through neighborhoods to the river, is really enormous. So if we move forward with this plan, what do we accomplish? We think there are a few things. And someone mentioned this before, and thank you, this idea of one riverfront, one Saginaw. And it really does bring Saginaw together. It really does create one riverfront that connects to an incredible natural area in the south to some of the more exciting economic opportunities in the north. And it's just a phenomenal bridge between those two opportunities. So what's our vision? Well, here's the Wicks Park area and here's our vision. And what I'll do is just walk through the main elements of it. But you can see, our planning area starts at the Center Street Bridge, no, the Rusk Street Bridge, sorry, and moves to the south at the Y. And we stop at the drain, more or less to the south, and extend along the edge of the farmland, which we believe is city-owned, to the south of the park. We've also included in our planning area some opportunities that include land that we believe is owned by the, or managed by the land trust and also by the city. So the first part of our plan is really the connections that this plan provides. Again, we've talked about it, connecting the north to the south, connecting to this wildlife, the Shahuwasi National Wildlife Refuge. But also connections to the east through these green fingers that extend from the park to the south. And some of these are vacant lots, some of these are just older greenways. But there are remarkable connections to bring people into the community and enjoy the resource. Another part of our vision is community. The more we looked into Saginaw, we realized how many really famous people come from here. And one of the cool things is the Goodridge Brothers, who are sort of the fathers of photography. One of the, we've got the Williams Sisters, kind of this connection to activity and physical health. And we've just got people that are here today. People that use the river to boat and to fish and to run and to drive and to just enjoy and picnic and just enjoy the outdoors. Another part of our vision is respecting the environment. The south end of this park has a lot of acreage that could be used, as well as the green fingers, for wetlands. And one of the things that we do know, one of our planners, Mike Tunte with Design Workshop, is working in Detroit right now. And he's mentioned that the Michigan Department of Transportation, there's some other state agencies, are interested in wetlands for wetland mitigation. And they're willing to pay for that land. There is a tremendous opportunity to get, work with the Department of Transportation, sell some of that lands for permanent wetlands where the prior trade is gone, use that money as an endowment, and use the money from that endowment to potentially fund improvements in Wicks Park, but maybe fund improvements in other areas of the city as well. So we think that's a tremendous opportunity for this park and a potential way to look at even funding it. The other green fingers could be potentially included in wetlands. We obviously haven't done the research that's needed to see, you know, what kinds of constructed wetlands they could be. But we do think that these are opportunities. Another vision is the economy. Our plan really looks at opportunities to begin to widen the scope of business. We were down at the park pretty much every day. We saw people fishing pretty much every day. A lot of those people were not from the city. When people come into your city to fish, they buy things, they use your services, they add to the economy. Given the value of that fishing area, we really do think that's an opportunity. We think another opportunity is maybe working with the canoeing and kayaking community. We know that Cass River Greenway is looking at extending its river trail up to Wicks Park. That's a real opportunity to support another kinds of activities. We also think there are opportunities for fields in the park and that field rentals and other types of things can help reduce costs of maintenance. And our plan also looks at ways to reduce maintenance costs through design. And we'll talk about that in a minute. And then the last part of it is, we really do believe that Wicks matters for health. And we had a lot of health slides in our presentation on Sunday. We didn't want to go through all of them. But really, this is the bottom line. This is not a park in Saginaw. It's a park actually in Phoenix where I come from. It's in a community and it's packed on Saturdays and Sundays beyond belief. It's a middle to low-income community. And everybody is in that park doing every kind of activity and family activity you can imagine. And the truth of the matter is, is people who have parks that are accessible, that are maintained, use them more and they tend to be healthier. Our plan consists of six intervention areas. And I'll move pretty quickly through these. The first intervention area is what we're calling the North Link. We think there, there's already a soccer field. We think that that should be capitalized on and celebrated. It's a good connection to the Y. The Y could use it for teams. Also, if you begin to charge for that field, it's a way to begin to create revenues. We know there are a lot of soccer fields in the township, but it's a great opportunity to have one in the city as well. The way this is designed is there's maybe an opportunity for mowing reductions on the slope. That setting is a natural amphitheater. You really wouldn't need to put in a lot of bleachers. Clearly, the Iron Bell Path Connection. And restriping the current Wicks Drive, which I'll talk about in a minute. This plan includes an idea for a food forest. And then a little bit longer term, there's some ideas for parking lot improvements. These six interventions are things you can do now at a very, very low cost to create the park. This is an idea of what that intervention could be like. We talked about the idea of public art and the photo frame. We know a lot of people get their graduation pictures taken in front of the silos. Well, we could put a wood photo frame. You could build it yourself, use a woodworking club. Let people go down there and take their picture. What a great way to celebrate the park and celebrate the city. The second intervention area is what we're calling the Picnic Place. As we drove along the drive, there's a lot of really beautiful wide areas, some with picnic tables between the road and the river. Again, this is an opportunity, very low-level intervention, where you could just put in a picnic table and over the summer, chain it to a tree if you're worried that someone's gonna steal it. Maybe as time goes on, you create a more permanent table. There are ways to make these things flood resistant. And that's, of course, a longer-term improvement. But just create the place. And until that happens, just sign it, let people go out with a blanket and a basket. And it's an identifiable area that people can have a picnic at, sit under a tree. It's absolutely beautiful. Here's just an idea of picnic place and an easy thing. We talked a little bit earlier about Wicks Drive and striping the drive. There was a lot of discussion about removing cars from Wicks Park in our community meetings. We know the Iron Bell Trail is planned there. We know that it's planned for maintenance issues. We think that there may be opportunities to use this road for parking. It may be able to provide an opportunity for the city to not have to maintain existing parking areas and maybe return those to green space and just maintain and keep that roadway. Keeping the roadway open might keep the park a little bit safer. This scheme is for what you're seeing here is a divided bike path. On one side of the road, a buffer area, parking, a buffer area, sorry, a buffer area, parking, and then a one-way road. It's just a concept, an idea. We talked with the city engineer about it. She said, you know, give it a shot, float it. So we're doing that now. The third intervention that we're looking at is the Neighborhood Park. Many of you know that Neighborhood Park that exists there now is a safety hazard. There's no two ways about it. There's exposed edges, metal, there's broken glass. The basketball court is uneven. It really can't be reused and repaved. The nets are gone, the baseball field, the backstop isn't fixed. The fencing isn't anchored to the ground. But we really think that there is a really quick way to begin to get this going. You can either fence or remove those existing improvements and replace it with a very low-cost playground. Maybe just using some wood logs where you could do different levels of, you know, where kids could jump from one level to another. We know there's a program with schools where some of the schools that have closed their recreation equipment could get moved to the park. That's another opportunity. And there's another opportunity to just program it, call it a park. And for a few thousand dollars, Gohai was talking about, you can just get a mobile play area and move it and take it in at night. So there's just a lot of ways to clean up that area, make it safe for kids, make it usable for the community. People talk to us about moving the playground away from the fields. There's a way to do that because of some of the terrain in that park. And we can talk about that more. Here's just an example of what that area could look like with, you can see to the left of the tower where we would put the little playground. Courts are to your right. Fourth intervention is what we're calling the River Launch. We know right now that launch has about a three-foot drop. It doesn't work for boats, but it does work for kayaks. It could work for canoes. Maybe just in the beginning, have an event there once a month or a few times in the summer where people can bring their kayaks and launch. Maybe the next summer, speak to someone that does kayak rentals. Let him drive his truck down and rent kayaks from the site. Take him in at the end of the day, he can drive it back. As that gets more stable, maybe there's an opportunity for concessions with kayak clubs. Maybe there's an opportunity to work with a greenway group. But it's all very low-cost. It doesn't require building anything big. It really just requires getting people there and focusing some activity on the site. We think this is a great trail connection to the Naval Reserve. We actually went and spoke with the lieutenant of the reserve. Their people use that road and they run up to the Y. They work out at the Y because they get a discount and they run back. They would love to see exercise equipment along that trail. They think it would be great. They're even willing to do boot camp. So we've hooked them up with the neighborhood group and we're hoping to see boot camp by a Navy guy soon, which I think would be a lot of fun. I'd come back for that. So that's one of the, just again, easy, low-cost interventions that could begin to bring life back to this park. And this is something, if you just cleaned up the area along there where people fish, maybe what we could see. Our fifth intervention is a really exciting area. Our fifth intervention area is what we're calling the Nature Center. There's a bathroom, an old bathroom from probably the 70s there. That's, looks like it's in pretty rough shape. We were Google-Earing it and we found a picture from 2012 where the vegetation was cleared. It's a phenomenal building. It is a really great building. It's got great stonework. It has great character. We know that there may be some thoughts about tearing it down. One of our recommendations is work with the Boy Scouts. Get them to clear the brush from around that area. Just clean up the building. There's nothing really left to clean, so you can just clean it out. And then maybe just fence it. But the backside of that building has about a 15-foot wide porch. It looks back out on the drain. It's the million-dollar view. Once a month, let a church group have a service there. Maybe do coffee on Sundays. When it's not in use, just keep it fenced until we can work a little bit more with Shahuwasi who want to do outdoor nature education programs. Maybe bring them up there a couple times a year, a few times a year. Over the years, that'll grow. But you will have saved a really remarkable building. And hopefully, if you've created a wetlands, you've got now a nature center, an interpretive center, and place some people can come to learn about the wetlands and learn about Saginaw. There's a couple of bridges in that area already. We know Phil has gone down there on a Saturday and just repaired them on his own. They're great bridges. And they really could create a really great nature trail connection to help people learn about nature, understand the value of the river, understand the value of their park. And they really don't have to leave their back door. Something like this would also help you reduce mowing. It could lower maintenance costs. And again, with the help of a scout troop or some kind of an organization like that going down there once a month, it's probably possible to keep it maintained. Here's just some visions from the back of that nature center. It really is an incredible space. The sixth intervention is soccer fields. We heard a lot about the need for fields and the interest in playing soccer. There is a housing complex just to the north of that. We're thinking that if we can get more eyes in that area through activity, it might be an opportunity for fields. We could work with mowing on this, so there might be a way to, we know that some right now, some of that grass is mowed and the hay gets sold to the zoo. We think that's a great idea. We think this is a longer-term option. But there are parking lots there already, so it would be really a very minimal thing. And the thing to think about with that park is with these two fields and the fields up north, you're set up for tournaments. So it's a great place for soccer tournaments. You can begin to have a regional stature with that, with the park in the middle. It's a great place for a family to come and spend the day. We talked a lot about the long game. You know, we recognize this park is a long-term commitment. It's a big piece of land. It's well over 70 acres of just developed area. It's a long proposition, which is why we looked at these interventions as low-cost to no-cost and mainly thinks it could be community-led. But as the park begins to grow and begins to develop, there are funding sources out there for them. And our funding expert, Rich Lucas from Trust for Public Land, he's our federal funds expert, put together this list. And you can just see there are a lot of opportunities. I'm not gonna read through all of them. And there's outside funding sources as well. I would also just add that one of our focus group was funders. And we do believe that there is interest in funding this park and supporting this park throughout the community. We had six people show up at our funding focus group, six funders. So there really is a commitment to Wicks. And it was very gratifying for me as an outsider who hears all different kinds of things to see that level of commitment. So instead of people saying, oh yeah, Wicks, that used to be, what we'd like to do is really focus on the future. Change the conversation about this park. Recognize it for the resource it is. And with that, I will say thank you so much. Oh, and one last thing and answer any questions. And just, we know neighborhood commitment's important. Through this process, the neighborhood's already started. They're starting to meet twice a week. They're beginning to identify leaders. Gohai has coalesced around it. The city kind of helped us and gave us the number for playground equipment maintenance. So where they can come out and help maintain equipment that's falling, maybe falling apart, more encouraging neighbors to go to the NAG meetings, the citywide police meetings. And there does seem to be a fair amount of interest. So we do hope that keeps up once we leave and hand this plan back to you. The plan will be available online at the APA website. We've created the Wicks Park website. We'll put that online too. And we're hoping the final plan will be ready in a couple of months. So with that, I'll say thank you. And I'm sorry for taking a little bit longer.
That's fine. That's just fine. Council members, questions, comments? Go ahead.
I think this can be a catalyst to our city to make it a beautiful place for everybody. I know a lot of people probably thinking about maybe crime in the neighborhood and things of that nature. And I was trying to see a way we could tie this into the tax cap. You know, maybe it could be a win-win for the city of Saginaw. If we do lift the tax cap, maybe we can show how, a lot of people are afraid if we lift the tax cap that the money that's gonna be absorbed into administration fees. And this thing you know, the manager's driving a Cadillac or something like that, I don't know. But what I'm saying is that they worried about the funds just being absorbed into the city coffers. And I understand that. So maybe if we want to lift this tax cap, maybe we ought to say that if we lift it, and we have seven mills right now, and if we go up to the maximum of 20 mills, maybe we could say one and a half mills would go towards policing the park. Maybe we can say another mill could go towards hiring a couple of policemen for all the parks. Maybe we lift it, maybe we can get out of another mill, maybe we can get a parks division for the city of Saginaw. We gotta make this a win-win for the city of Saginaw if we're gonna lift this tax cap. And I think that'd be a good way of tying it in. Maybe the Armory could even help us out with policing or ranging the area. Do parks, how big do a park have to be before we can get a ranger from the state of Michigan? You know, we tie all those things in a park, I think it'd be a win-win for the whole city. But we gotta show some type of way how the tax cap could help out these situations. And I hope that the city manager and his staff will take a look at maybe putting something together like that. If we lift a tax cap, so many mills, how many policemen are we gonna get out of this for the city of Saginaw? How many people can we get to work with the parks and things of that nature? So I just want to throw that out there since that's my job as a city council person is to bring up some ideas. So maybe we got something we could work with. Thank you, man. I really appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. As well. I just have one quick question, well, not a quick question. This is my biggest concern. We always start, but we never finish. So how long is this program? Is this a program that's going to just come right now and go away tomorrow? Is this program going to last so that we can actually see, begin to see?
Mayor Browning, Councilman Moore, thank you for that question. The six interventions we gave you could easily be accomplished within the next year. Not all of them, all of them could, but you know, you've got one neighborhood group, and it really just, I think it's going to be a function of the city. I know there are a lot of folks here that showed up at the, wow, showed up at the workshops and really seemed to be committed, but our first level of interventions are really things that could happen within a year or two. The next level, we know, is a longer game, and you know, this park could have improvements. You could build it tomorrow if you had one big chunk of money. You could build it over 10 years, you could build it over 50 years. But what our belief is, is that we need to get people in it, we need to get activity into it, and we need to get programming into it. And we do feel that this first level of interventions will be enough to promote that interest. Councilman Ball's talked about the tax cap. He's certainly right. A lot of communities that I work for do bond for parks, they do use revenues for those parks, and certainly parks are something. It's a worthy investment that people can see. They can see their tax dollars at work, and they get to enjoy them and use them as well. So lifting the tax cap, should you so choose to use some of those monies for that park, could make that go forward as well. But we've said to the neighborhood more than once, I think, this is a long, this is a marathon, this is a long game, and we do believe there are some short-term wins, but it's a long game.
To my heart. Which neighborhood group is this?
Well, I think it's the group of folks that are representing the park and from many neighborhoods within the city, and that's what we've learned. So if they want to, I don't know, do you guys want to just raise your hands and show them who you are? Stand up? Who's from the neighborhood group? Yeah. And there's a lot of folks, a lot of different agencies and organizations that are really looking to support this park.
Thank you.
Are the council members done?
Leslie, if you could clarify something for me. Is there funding in place or near to in place for the conversion of the majority of Wix Park Drive to a trail, to repaving it, to a smaller dimension, and you mentioned restriping? Where are we on that?
For our public services department, so I think Phil will probably ask the city engineer to give council an update on the projects that we're doing at Ojibwe Island and that trail project in Wix Park. It's funding from non-motorized trails within our own engineering department, but I think Beth London will be giving an update on the road projects pretty soon that she usually does annually, so maybe we'll put that in that same presentation.
Thank you. Any other council members? Well, Leslie, you mentioned that there's a final report that has to be submitted yet. Is that correct?
Correct. Within the next couple to few months, we're aiming for a couple, our team will put together a final document. We'll be providing it to you, to Gohai, who's our client at this point, and it will be posted on the website. Right now, we've posted the slide shows and all these drawings, so if you want to take a closer look at them, we're getting that, I think, connected on the Facebook page, so you're welcome to download those presentations. The one we did yesterday, I just want to clean it up a little bit more before we post it, and I think the one we're doing tonight is obviously available on your website. We'll be posting it on that.
So in between that time, what happens now, Leslie? Between now and that final report comes out, what's?
Well, what I'm expecting to happen is the neighborhood group will start meeting on a regular basis, begin to identify the key projects that they want to take on over the next years. I believe that the Saginaw Community Foundation is beginning to provide some technical assistance and support to that neighborhood group so that they can build their own capacity, and what happens is we turn it back to you.
All right. Council members, if there's no other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Very well-done presentation, very well. This speaks very highly of your group and the success you guys are having very much. Do you have?
I do, actually. I'd like to thank you guys. The city has been nothing but helpful and generous to us. The manager, Phil, the parks, maintenance folks, planners, everyone in your city really took time and helped us learn about the park and the community and the projects they're doing, and you really have a wonderful set of staff and a wonderful city, and I need to thank you for that. I need to thank you for listening to us as well because we really do appreciate the opportunity, and it's just been a privilege to know your city. It's a wonderful group of folks, and I know I speak on behalf of the whole team for that and APA.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Leslie.
Clapping earlier, but that's okay. There are exceptions, and the whole group is in agreement. It's when the room is divided that we have problems with that. So thank you very, very much. Do you have a question for him?
Mr. Manager, do you know anything about the Delta College, the labor that's involved in that project? Are they going to be using our union labor?
I do not know.
No, if it's on the union labor or not?
I do not know.
Okay, all right.
Anything else for our manager?
I don't know if this is the right time, but we had, we got reports. Maybe I'll wait till we get the report, yeah. Right, I'm the new business.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, you are now at the consent agenda.
This is the, for the rest of you who are here, you're welcome to stay. This is the boring part of the meeting. If you are going to stay, and I would encourage you to, but if not, now's a good time. If you need to go, now is a good time to go. That's right. I'm telling you right now, they're not going to because they are going to sit there thinking, when can I leave? When can I leave? Can I leave now? Well, you just got to get a hold of Gohai. Gohai sets up the meetings. Yep. Okay, quickly. All right, the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving Room 4 exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? What number do you want? What number?
I don't know which one it is. We're talking about the fire hydrant, but it's.
Number 12. Number 12, exception to number 12. Is there any other exceptions? Are there any other exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Number 12, approve the purchase with Michigan Pipe and Valve for $98,000 for fire hydrants for the Maintenance and Service Division, Councilmember Balls.
Is this work that need to get done, or you just want to have some extra parts, or what?
I think it's for 60 hydrants, but we have over 3,500, 3,600 fire hydrants in the city that are, you know, very old. Some are over 70, 80 years old, so a lot of times when they're operating them manually to winterize them, some of them leak or break, so this is just the amount that we need on an annual basis to change out those that need to be replaced. Yep, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to know. I was curious about that.
Okay. And then we just asked them, it was a low bid last year, but with the volatility in the market, we think we're getting a very good price at the bid price last year, so they agreed to extend that price to us for one more year.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I approve it.
It's been moved and supported for item number 12. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Council members, is there any council member who wants to report any of their boards or commissions or report at all? Being none, we have three, two reappointments and one appointment. What's your pleasure on appointing? Make, go ahead, make your motion.
The appointments and the reappointments, as stated.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? We have support. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Question of ordinances, we have one this evening. It's an ordinance to repeal and add new Section 153.460, Riverfront Mixed Use District of Chapter 153, zoning regulations, Title 15, land usage.
I need a motion to adopt. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion, council members? This is an introduction. This is just a motion to introduce the ordinance.
And the ordinance, if we approved or not approved, what is it now?
Okay. We have explanation on that?
Good evening, members of council. If you remember, on halfway decent Saturday in January, we did have a specific presentation regarding the ordinance. It's quite a lengthy adoption. It's a different way of zoning different areas to facilitate development. The regular-type zoning, it looks at the uses. So in other words, if it's a business district, you can have a store and a restaurant, and it looks specifically at how that property is used. Form-based zoning takes a little bit different approach and looks at, not necessarily what's happening inside the building, but what the site looks like. So in other words, you can have other uses that might not typically be seen in certain districts, but if you do it a certain way and you do it so that it kind of fits in, it can be okay. Kind of the simple way of explaining it, I could, like I said, it's a lengthy amendment, and if you want more, I can certainly provide that, but it's kind of a different way of looking at it.
Put an ice cream parlor, a bar over there where normally was just zoned for a house or something, or what?
Similar. Kind of like, a lot of things can be okay in a district as long as they're done right, if that makes sense.
Any other questions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries, and the ordinance will be laid over under our charter provision. Any questions you have between now and then, please get with the staff, direct them to our manager, and he'll get them to appropriate staff. Madam Clerk?
You are at motions and Ms. Leeny's business.
And I would like to call upon Councilwoman Brendan Mark, because she had a question.
We used, we got, I see today we received the minutes from some other groups. We had one group that I haven't seen minutes on, did it dissolve? And that was that Citizens Group that was formulated with the Milton Hall, the Citizen Concern Group. Did we dissolve that group, or did it just stop meeting? Or, I mean, I see everything in here but them.
Fire, then they've met their obligations for that. That was a committee appointed by the mayor, and in talking with the chief and other individuals, the concern is what value is the committee doing now based on the past experiences, the last year or so of that committee meeting, of losing focus on why they were there. So that is not currently meeting at this time. That doesn't mean that we couldn't bring that back. Be glad to have discussions on that, but at this time, in its current form, it is not meeting with that.
I'd like to have some discussions about bringing it back. I mean, it doesn't have to be every month or every week, but we still need to just have it in place, just in case.
Sure. Yep, I agree with you. Okay. Any other comments? Any other comments, questions? I need a motion? Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, we're adjourned.